I think I heard you just sharing, but Steve Holland is from ASBA and he's in charge of the executive searches there and I think as well as other things and policy consultant Steve and he is here tonight just to share what the, he would be able to do or through ASBA be able to do with the interim superintendent search. So welcome, Steve. We're glad you're here.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And Governing Board, good evening. Thank you for inviting me and also thank you for your support of ASBA. We appreciate all your efforts and of course, we appreciate the fact you support your community so well. What I've been asked to do tonight is to give you an overview of some of the things that we can do to help you during an interim search. I provided you a document that I believe you've been given that gives an overview of the search process. Now, they have to remember that this search process is modified to meet the district's needs. So when we talk about a interim search, we're talking about a generally a less strenuous process. If you go to the second page of that document that's been provided you, at the second paragraph down, it says "profile criterion and promotional brochure." That's the beginning of the process because what we have to do with boards, we have to build understanding. I'm going to suggest that because you've been so, such a stable district, had the same superintendent for 25 years, that person's been in the district for 50 years, that's significant stability. You have to build understanding that things are going to change and you haven't had the conversation in the past of, well, what if our superintendent leaves? What are we gonna, how are we gonna find a new person? What's that person gonna look like in terms of what they bring to the table with past experiences and readiness? So one of the first things we have to do is build a profile and we have to establish what that person's going to look like. The only way we can do that is to work with the five board members that you have and ask you to do your homework and ask you to begin thinking about what that new person does need to bring to the table. Once that's done, advertising comes into play. Now, you've already done that. It's on your website now and it's on our website also. We're helping to get the word out. There's an interview process. There's usually more than one interview. To get to the interview process, you have to screen applicants. You have to collect the files that they've presented to you. That is a process in and of itself because you learn from that. I liken this process somewhat to a funnel. You begin thinking about what the person needs to bring to the table. You don't overdefine it. You certainly can't ask the person to have 50 years experience in the same district, 25 years as a superintendent and be successful and find that new person. Just start a little, with a little different mindset. But we'll work with you in regards to that. If you'd ask us to, we'll have that advertisement there. We'll get ready for the interviews. We'll build upon the interviews in the same sense as you would build, looking at roles, goals, responsibilities, and a mission statement because it all has to tie together. So we would, we would build that for you. Look further in the document. We talk about the interview process itself, how to interview, what are good questions to utilize and those have to be built upon. Again, your roles, your goals, your mission statement and such. And then how do you do an interview? Most common thing that people think about is you've got a person in front of you and you ask them 10 or 15 questions and you respond to their answers and you write a lot of notes. But there's other ways to do this. There's role playing that can be involved. There's scenarios that can be provided. There's open conversation. Then it can occur. There's a number of things that, that you can do. And if in fact you were to work with us, we would work through that process with you. And then of course, once you've made a decision that you've found the right person, then there's an onboarding effort. You're used to as a board, your community's used to the same superintendent for a lot of years. You know how that superintendent's gonna respond before you ask a question. And she knows how you're gonna respond as a board and individual board members before she asks a question. That goes away because you've got somebody new in there and it's going to be different. So onboarding is an important aspect. Now, that's a, that's a very, very quick review of the process itself. But as you go down the document, you'll notice that on the third page, there's typical time frames. Usually an interim superintendent doesn't take as long, but you'll notice I put four to 14 weeks. Well, what does that amount to? Why is it your widespread? Well, it depends on what you would ask a search agent to do. It could be a very simple process. We're gonna advertise, we're gonna interview, and we're gonna make a decision. But you can build into it the things that we build into a full search for a hopefully long-term superintendent, which would be community meetings, leadership meetings, outreach programs to go visit possibly the district that the person currently works in. We don't necessarily advise you that you have to do all of those things however, because we know that this is an interim position. But you're a little different because you're looking from what I understand is having an interim for a full year. So you may want to consider some of those more aggressive tactics. But that of course is a district decision. And that's something that's really important. If you work with us, we will guide the process. We will help you. We'll give you the best advice we can, but we won't make decisions for you. That's absolutely in the board's realm. We'll give you options and things we think you should consider. We'll tell you what we would do if, if we were in a life situation. But this is the board's decision-making process, not ASBA's. With that in mind, what I have been advised of is that initially, you might be looking at just two things. One, having us help you with the profile. How would that look? If you were to ask me to do that, I would build a little bit of homework for you. And I would ask you as individual board members, not as a group, but as individual board members, to start thinking about what it is that you think that interim should bring to the table. And in doing so, I'd ask you to record that on a form that I would provide and you turn it back in to me. I would take all five of those and I would put them together in a fashion so that you could see everybody's work. And then we would, at a board meeting, we would talk about these things. We'd look at them. We'd talk about the number of things we had. We'd talk about the consistency or lack of consistency in what was presented. And we would boil that down to the points that you believe are most important for a person to bring to the table. Once we did that, then we could talk about the process of interviewing, how we would want to do that, and most importantly possibly is the questions you're gonna ask and also what kind of answers you want to see. What is it in that question that's important to you? You never ask a question where you answer the question at the same time. Ask a question that's open enough that you truly get a perspective of what the person is thinking about the particular topic. So from that, that initial homework you did, it would flow through that we would have not just the mindset of what you're looking for, but also the questions you're gonna ask and have a feeling from the board as a whole, what type of answers are going to be the most acceptable to you. Again, all of that ties back to your goals. All of it ties back to your mission statement. So those are the two things that we, I have been asked to, to kind of focus on and begin to think about in terms of what the board has apparently talked about as a group and what might ASBA do. Now, with those two things in mind, all of those things on that sheet that I sent you of the things we could do when it comes to a full comprehensive search are also available to you if you so, if you chose to do that. I know that you've already begun to advertise, but we can advertise. We can use our, our advertisement, our application documents. We can do our work with the community. We can have e-surveys out to the community and staff. Don't know that you want to go that far, but it's possible. Each step of course adds to the layer and a work to be done and it obviously takes longer. As you can see, it's can be a 14-week, even longer process. But if you modify it just to the basics, again, probably somewhere in the name, neighborhood of six weeks could get you to a point where you're ready to start making some real decisions about who it's gonna be that you bring in as your interim superintendent. So that's a, that's an overview that I wanted to present. You've got the information I gave you in that document. Madam President, I'd stand for any questions that the, the board has related to the process, what we can do and how we would do it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Do we have any questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Olive.
That's me. Hey, Steve. This is Jason. It's good to meet you. Two quick questions. First, do you guys help with the interview process at all?
The wit process? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I wasn't right on the microphone. Do you guys help with the interview process at all?
We certainly can. If you'd like presence with you so that you can help, we can help with understanding, so we can help with process. We can certainly be there. We can certainly add to the conversation. What we're hearing, maybe validate or not, something that may or may not be said. We can, we can certainly take that role if that's something you'd like.
Second, good. Thank you. Second question. Do you guys participate in negotiations or have experience doing that?
We do not participate in negotiations. That becomes a legal matter between you and your attorney. And we recommend that your attorney, which I believe I've heard, she already knows you're going through this process, that that conversation with the attorney begins early.
Okay.
And the attorney needs to know what you're looking for and you would work out the legal language with her.
That was all I had.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? I know I have a few. Do, are, are your services at this point in time all virtual or would you be doing these, some of these in-person onsite?
Right now, they're virtual. Like everyone else, we've taken, you know, some pretty strong steps to protect ourselves and to protect, you know, the staff as a whole. So right now, they're virtual. We're certainly looking forward to getting out of this realm and into a time when we can meet with boards. When that'll occur, I can't tell you at this point.
Okay.
But certainly it's more effective.
Okay. And then for an interim superintendent, do you typically also get leadership, district leadership input such as our, from our associate superintendents, principals and things like that? Or is that something that we can have optional?
Absolutely. And that's a board decision. I mentioned to you earlier that I would take you through a process. If you wanted the district leadership to be involved in that, certainly it would be a collective effort then.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Yes, Ms. Love?
I just had a question about the interview preparation. So that is a public process, but I'm not quite clear on what that looks like. Can you expand upon that a little bit?
Absolutely. Interview process in terms of, of building questions is, is something that we have to do in public. And it's, it's one of those things that doesn't fit under open meeting law for an executive session. So we have to be cautious because we don't want to give away everything upfront because some people could have unfair advantage of knowing what the board wants before it's stated. So we have to be cautious how we do that. But that is something that we need to work on. Also, the components of the interview itself, how the interview unfolds, is the interview simply with the board? Does the board want the administration or community leadership to have an opportunity to meet these folks and maybe ask questions ahead of time, also ahead of the time that the board would make a decision? And then again, how, how are you gonna ask these questions or how are you gonna seek information? As I mentioned earlier, is it simply a question and answer series? Are you gonna build, ask them to build on a scenario? Are you gonna ask them to do a role play? Sometimes those are pretty telling. And the role play would be with me, for instance, where you'd be observing how they respond to, if I took the role of a member of the public that had a concern and I presented that and the person responds. Those can be kind of telling on how a person's gonna act under the pressure of having a question posed to them that maybe isn't something I'd like to talk about or maybe it's just not a pleasant conversation. So those are the types of things that we would talk about in terms of, how do you want this to look? But first, we have to decide what do you want to get out of this? And that's where that point of building questions based upon that first step of what each one of you is looking for and then agreeing upon what is it you're truly looking for. I would just about guarantee at this point that the five of you, if you had to fill out a form of exactly what the new superintendent was gonna look like or the interim, it would be different between all five of you because you've not had that conversation. This board hasn't gone through that process, although you've probably talked about things in the past, but you haven't gone through a process of nailing it down to say the top five things that you definitely want to see the new person bring to the table for that year while you're then searching for a long-term superintendent.
Thank you. Mrs. Berner, did you have any questions? Mr. Worth, do you have any questions?
I do. I'm Barb.
Yes. Now, I do have a question. Can you both hear each other? Steve, can you hear Mr. Worth?
I, I think I did hear him there.
Okay, okay.
I can hear both sides. Just curious, how long have you done this kind of work?
How long have I done this kind of work? I joined ASBA about 11 years ago. I was, as most people in the, as an administrator, I started as a teacher. I was an assistant principal, as a principal, as a special ed director, and then I was an administrator at the district office. I retired, came to ASBA as a policy analyst, and then I believe it was seven years ago, I also took on the managing of the executive searches.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Was that all Mr. Worth?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Steve. I appreciate you coming and visiting with us today and we will be talking a little bit more about this later on in our meeting. So thank you very much and have a great evening.
Thank you and good luck to all for the work that you do. Thank you. It's a difficult time and I know that you have a lot of things on your plate. So thank you much for your community effort and your effort to build the greatest possible district you can.
Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Yes, you are. We aren't saying anything at the moment.
Okay.
But our, but our next individual is coming, coming into the board room right now and we're just kind of getting ready here.
Just take us just a minute. There you go. Now you should be able to. You're gonna have to use my laptop here. Okay, Madam President, members of the board, I'm pleased to introduce to you Eden Higgins from the Duffy Group. And she is also going to share a little bit about how she helps with these types of executive searches. So thank you.
Just a sound check. Mr. Worth, were you able to hear Mrs. Cooper?
Yes, but I missed the first name of the presenter.
Her name is Eden Higgins.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. How are you tonight?
Great.
Would you mind if I took off my mask when I present? Is that okay?
Um, you probably should keep it on.
Oh, I should? Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam President and board members and everyone else for inviting, giving me time today to talk about Duffy Group and how we can possibly help you find the, and help select the interim superintendent and possibly the superintendent. Could be the same person. So our scope of services, Duffy Group is a full-service recruiting firm. And we have been in business for 30 years. It's our 30-year anniversary this year. We have done over 5,000 searches in those 30 years in a lot of different areas. We've done higher ed. We've done nonprofit education. We have done nonprofit K through, like charter schools K through 12. We haven't done public schools K through 12. We've done a lot of nonprofits. And I have been with Duffy Group for 21 years this month. And have, prior to that, was in human resources for various companies in the valley and decided I just love recruiting and finding great people. Let's see. So that's a little bit about me. It's really, it's a, so I'm Eden Higgins. I think I already said that. And I'm, I went to Arizona State University. I was born in Phoenix, so I'm a native. I don't know if anybody else is a native here. And I went to Xavier, graduated from Xavier, and I'm still on their school board. And I'm a volunteer there. And I also coach. And I coach against Chandler High School unfortunately and cross-country because they're very, very good. So I just, I'm very passionate about finding the right people for the various and sundry companies that we work for or entities. And I, I get to learn every day. Let's see. So the Duffy Group is based on, we've been doing the same thing for the last 30 years. And we follow the same approach. And I know that this particular project will only be the first part of our approach, but I just wanted to show you what we do because we are full service. So the different lines, first is strategy development. And that's, I will get into that later because that is the project that we're talking about this evening. Then we do recruitment research where we find the targeted candidates and we actually call into the competitors or let's say, we would call into other school districts. We would call and talk to the assistant superintendents for, for actual school districts that have won awards across the nation. So we are headhunters. Some people in my profession don't like that term. I love it because we go and try to find the best person anywhere for our, for, for our clients. Then we call them and talk to them. Hey, are you interested? We're not pushy. We just say, you know, hey Sandy, this is Eden. Do you have a few minutes to talk? And we talk about the role. And if they say they're not interested, we get referrals. And if they are, if they're not, if they don't want to talk to us, we don't push. Always very professional. And then we evaluate, if the person moves forward in the process, we evaluate the, the candidate and we present a slate of three to five qualified candidates to our clients at the end. So that's full service to, for Duffy Group. But the strategy development portion is what you all want to talk about or learn about today. So after, we've been in business for 30 years and we've been hiring the right candidates for a lot of different positions, executives, presidents, that little engineer that there's only 10 in the world. We find those people too. All the way up and down the food chain, right and left, horizontal, vertical, we do it all. And the beginning of our process is the strategy development. For this particular project, it is, is very, very similar to projects for nonprofits with a big board. Very similar to projects that I've worked on for higher education. Most recently, we did a couple of searches for Clemson University. Has anybody heard of Clemson? So sad, that football game. I had to call them up and say sorry, but they said our coach kind of deserved it. But anyway, I'll go on to a different subject. So what we would do is we, we like to talk to our, or listen, listen to the board, listen to the individuals that are the owners of this role. What do they want? What are the expectations? And we listen and we listen. Sometimes we are, sometimes our, our, our clients share strategic plans. And I saw that you all have a 10-year strategic plan with a lot of rubric that would definitely have this role be part of. So how are we going to take those, that rubric for the strategic plan in 10 years and back it into what are you looking for this, for this year, the interim superintendent? What are you looking for possibly and how is it going to differentiate for the future superintendent? What are the challenges of the role? That's not gonna be in the 10-year plan, right? And that's really when we want to be, it's, we need to be transparent with each other. If you all are transparent, then we can find the right person. The last thing that we want to do is tell, say, this is a rose garden and everything's beautiful and there are no problems and the person gets in here and they're miserable. We want to set them up and you up for success. So we're very transparent with you. We're, and we want you to be with us. And we're very transparent with the candidates when we speak with them, if we get the chance to do that. We'd like to, we begin, how are we, how are, how am I gonna find out this, this, all these expectations of the superintendent, expectations of the superintendent in the future, the challenges of the role, the personality traits? I will put together a survey that each one of you will complete for me. And you'll do it, you'll send it back to me and it will be anonymous. When I send, I will put it all together and send it back to you all to review. And then you, then we'll have a discussion. Let's see what traits you, let's find. What are we looking for in this person? What kind of person's going to be able to meet all this criteria? Or maybe sometimes, I know that you guys, you probably don't believe this, but maybe some of the board members of the nonprofits that I've worked for don't agree. What happens then? That needs to be addressed, right? So we say, okay, so it looks like somebody wants to go right and looks like one person wants to go left. So what are we going to tell the candidate? What kind of candidate do you want? Somebody that's going to go right or somebody that's going to go left? Is everybody hopefully on the board agree with what we're looking for in the future? Maybe. I don't know. Do you know that? But that, this is a way to find out. And it's just a way of working through the process. And this happens with boards. This happens with corporations. This happens with executives. It happens with engineers, just people that are part of a team. What's going to work? And there are different things that work and you never thought they would. So it's a way to be creative in the group and figure it out. But it all starts with a survey. You complete, and it's not really hard. It'd probably be about, I don't know, an hour to take at the max if you're being honest about everything for you all to fill it out. Or actually, I keep on going like this, but you'll probably type it, type, type it in. And then I will, will put all the comments and facts and the things in one document and then you'll share it. So that'll be the first part of our process. And then the second part of the process would be, actually, this is the, the third, but the second part of the process would be to get together and figure out what are the traits that we need, what are the attributes of the candidates? And then, how are we gonna find out if these candidates have those attributes? We develop a list of questions, candidate questions. We have, again, I'm gonna go back to 30 years of experience, asking questions of candidates for all different levels of roles, trying to figure out the attributes that they need. Or, and the questions are definitely behavioral-based questions. What have they done in the future that would predict success for the, the goal that you want them to get, that, that you want them to attain in the first year, in the, in the first five years, in the first 10 years? Okay. And then during the process, sure, you ask a question, but then you think, okay, Mike, how are we going to do this? Then I, I also, with Clemson, with the nonprofits, with the, with the higher education boards that we work with, we help them. We, we give them another form to fill out during the interview. You know, maybe something just to put, sometimes it's two steps. Maybe it's just a, a sheet of paper that you scribble on with your notes. And then a rubric after all the candidates are done. Because I know that we'll probably be virtual possibly. And then you guys are up high, so they wouldn't be able to see your papers. But the last thing you want to see is circling. That somebody gets, the candidate can see you grading them right there in front of them. So we wouldn't do that. It would be after. And some of our nonprofit and even with the higher education clients, they like to have, is that better? I'm sorry. Were you able to hear me all the whole time? Okay. whole time? Okay. My mom said I was always very loud, so it's helpful in this case. Sometimes, we have a little pow-wow after every interview, just so the, the group can say, this is what I thought, what, you know, highlights, maybe negative things, maybe positive things for the candidate, and then time for people to take their notes. So, sometimes we do, it depends on what the board wants, and how much, how much involvement they want from us. But sometimes, we're there to help them, sometimes we're not. So, the rubric would be an Excel spreadsheet, and then, the column would be the attributes that we figured out when we did our strategy session, and we figured out what those goals were, and we backed into those attributes of the candidate. That would be on the, the vertical side, and then, on the top would be the candidates' names, and we would assign numbers and see, you know, maybe a weighted, maybe something's a lot more important, it's a go or no-go, maybe something's a nice-to-have. So, we kind of make it easy for you all to decide who is the best one numerically. Now, and sometimes, our clients, even though somebody got 10 out of 10, they may have picked somebody else. So, the numbers aren't always the tell, tell sign, because there's a lot of different things that make up a great candidate. But it's, it's a way for you all to measure your, the attributes that are necessary. It's a way for you to measure what you think is important in the role, and then, measure the candidates. And we can help and walk through that. And so, and like I said, many times, we're very, very involved. Sometimes, they don't, our clients do not want us involved in that process, you know, but we're there to be, to help if needed. So, the interview process, we would also assist in who's going to ask what question. Because I know it seems like, oh, you just have an interview session. Well, Sandy might ask question number one every single time, to make it, so it's always, the flow is nice. Maybe the first candidate that we interview, maybe it goes a little rough, so then we say, okay, let's, Sandy's going to go to this, and then she's going to ask question number two also, because it flows better. Everybody says yes, and then everybody gets to ask, ask a certain number of questions. And it's, it's really best to treat the candidates, if we can at all possible, exactly the same way, when they come in. Exactly the same questions, in exactly the same order. Many of our, really, this is such an important role, I would, I would recommend having the individual give some sort of a presentation to begin the interview. So, not just coming in here and getting grilled by, by the, by the board, but actually doing, let's give them a word problem. Math doesn't need to be included. Let's, here's a question, here's something that we could do, and we've done it for our clients. How about we give, you all know what the worst problem that your school district has right now. Or maybe you don't. Maybe we figure out, what is that problem? And let's get some free advice from five or six candidates that have great backgrounds, and can give us ideas of what to do. Now, caution, I don't want them to waste their time, right? But let's, let's, we want them to have some ownership. So, let them do a five-minute presentation, and give some ideas on how to solve something that you've been looking for ideas of how to solve. Why not? That's what we do for a lot of our clients. And you can really tell, then, which candidates are in, and which candidates are out, by how much they prepare, actually, and how important it is to them. It's a great indicator of something that one of those interview questions never would have found. It's a really great indicator of the person that they are. So, providing the interview questions and candidate feedback forms, I already talked about that, orchestrating and organizing the interview as much as necessary, even if it's just giving you the form with your names on it. So, just so it's easy to follow. And then, like I said, provide as much or as little assistance as, as you all want. So, the deliverables, what are we going to get? As a board, what you're going to get? You're going to get a summary of all the information that we find out during that survey process. You're going to get a list of expectations from that survey, of what the board feels, what needs to happen in the first six months for this position, what does, has to happen in the first year for this position. So, that would be for the interim. And then, if the interim is not the same person that will be the superintendent long-term, again, for the new, for the superintendent long-term, what's going to happen in the first six months? What needs to happen in the first year? What needs to happen in the first five years, in 10 years? And then, like I said, we would deliver a list of interview questions for the candidates, and the rubric for your, for the board, for during the process, and then, an agreed-upon outline of the interviewing process for the candidates. So, it's handled every way. And we could do more, and we could do less also. So, our, the great thing about Duffy Group is, we would cater the project towards what you want. This is what we recommend. But if you want more, great. If you want less, if you only want to have a fill-in-the-blank questionnaire, then I can do that, too. I don't recommend that, though, at this level of position. And that's, that's it. That's the rest, that's the end of my presentation. I do have some, some samples of the work documents that we've done for the different searches, but Sandy and I thought that was just a little bit too much information. But if somebody wants to see it, I can put it up on the screen.
Thank you, Eden. I truly appreciate you coming and being here in person with us tonight.
Sure.
I, I do have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
So, if, how much more complicated is it if we wanted to include our, some of our leadership positions in that survey, because many of our board members probably don't realize what the day-to-day interactions and
Sure.
real, real job is of a superintendent?
I think that would be fabulous.
And their input would, I mean, so is it, is it a lot more work to be able to send something out to them, to survey them also, or, or how would that work?
That is not, that would not be a problem. I highly encourage getting as much input as possible. I probably wouldn't want to do it so every person, every parent in the district gets to fill it out. That'd be a lot more.
Well, and, and my, my vision would be probably, for our interim superintendent, we, we scale it back
Okay.
to a smaller group, and as we move outward for our permanent superintendent, we then go further into the community and things like that.
Yes. I believe that that would, that would be additional work, but really, it's, it's not that much more work, Barb. It would be very, or Madam President, is it? So...
Barb?
Uh, yes.
Barb?
Yes, Joel.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Joel.
Okay. So, you kind of mentioned what you would like to see happen. I didn't think this was the place to do that. Should I wait and do it in the executive session, where I think we should go, or should I say what I think we should do now?
If it's a question for our, for Ms., for Eden, that would be fine, but I, I think I'm expressing how, how much work is this, that it, you know, we would be looking at for interim. But why don't you wait, Joel?
Okay.
But, or you can phrase it as a question for her?
No, that's all right. I just
Okay.
It seemed like you were pretty much stating how you felt, and wasn't sure when I'm supposed to talk about what I think or not.
Okay.
I wasn't sure when to do that.
And other, also, Eden, would you be looking at doing a lot of this stuff in person, or how much of it would be virtual and in-person?
I'm open to whatever you all want.
Okay.
If you want me to do it in person, that's, that would be, you know, more time allocated to the project. But I will do whatever makes you feel comfortable, and whatever you think would be getting the best results.
Okay.
I do think with the survey, completing the survey, I think that's best done for people by themselves, one-on-one, either by themselves filling it out and sending it to me, or me, one-on-one. I think it would delude the information if it is done in a group of people to me, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just that I want to be able to get their true responses and their true feelings. And if it's a, a principle that you have, and then it's somebody that works on the superintendent staff together, maybe, maybe those answers would not be the same if they did it one-on-one with me, or just individually and sent it to me.
Okay.
So, if that makes sense.
Okay. Ms. Love?
I just have a question. You can tell me if this is appropriate. But just for comparison's sake, because I'm looking at the other person in the track record in terms of superintendent searches. But I know that you've found people for like higher ed and things like that, but within Arizona, how many districts have you helped, like public school districts, have you helped for the superintendent searches? And can you just name a few that you know offhand?
We haven't done any.
Oh.
Uh-huh. So, we've done higher ed. We have never, we've done some charter schools, like the Great Hearts Academies, those, we've helped them with some searches. But we have not done anything K through 12.
So, this would be the first time?
Well, it's the first time to find, it's not the first time that we're going to find a leader of a great organization that has great plans for the future. So, you're right. It is the first time that we would be doing a superintendent search.
Are there some differences, like, just from your experience, in terms of like charters from higher ed, that, you know, in the process, or would you say it's about the same process?
Great question, Ms. Love. I think the process that we follow is the same.
Okay.
When we deal with higher ed and nonprofit, it's slower than when we deal with a company that's out there. It's slower. So, the Clemson search could have been done in three months, but it took nine months because of what they wanted to do in the process, and moving forward, and everybody being involved. And I think it's the political aspect of some of those organizations that they have to be maneuvered around. But the, our process is always the same.
Okay.
It's always the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Olive, anything?
I have a question.
Okay, Mrs. Brunner?
So, I did have a question, both for you, and then one for administration. So, what evidence-based practices do you employ in the process? And then, also, do you follow up on references from the current or previous employers, and subordinates also? So, like those above and those below? And if so, how do you do that?
Sure. So, I would like to ask, what do you, can you describe evidence-based process? What are you talking about?
Meaning, research-based, what works? For example, structured interviews, and, you know, all the, all the research behind what you should be doing when you are making the decision of selecting an employee?
Sure. So, the, I guess the, I mean, we've, like I said, we've been in business for 30 years, and we've been, we, we follow best practices, and we're one of the best recruiting agencies in, in Arizona, and nationally, with some of our, in some of the industries that we're involved in. And what boils, and then I have my 15 years of human resources experience prior to that. But the evidence-based would be, the position questions that we have have to be bona fide, they have to be based on bona fide job qualifications. So, they can't be, it's best to not have a, it's, the legality of the matter actually comes into the gray area when it does not, it's not based on something that you want, a call, something in the job description, right? So, if you're looking for somebody, if you are looking for an individual, and you're, you have 400,000 students, okay, and you say, we want a superintendent that has, has had the responsibilities, or an assistant superintendent that has, has managed a district with 400,000 students, and we ask a question, how many students have you worked with, and what was the, and how did it grow? That would be based on what you're looking for. If I ask, would you like to sit in a soft chair or a hard chair? That's going to be hard to come back to the job description. And there are a lot of methodologies out there from the, from the 90s and the 80s, and even some things that say, use, you know, what color do you like? What's, how would you describe your color? I don't, we don't, we don't follow those things. We say bona fide job qualification, a question that surrounds those, the qualification, a question that surrounds the goals of the position that are documented in, on your website, and in your, in your, your strategic plan, and then we go backward. If it would, if it would veer off from that, I think that we would be in trouble. And I believe that you would all, if you would want to, I think it would be appropriate, after we're done with the questions, to run them past the legal counsel of the Chandler Unified School District. I think that would be great. Oh, and then you had asked me about the, sorry.
Just a minute, Joel.
And then you had asked me about references, Mrs. Brunner. So, yes, absolutely, we call references. And we would do, and again, it depends on what our clients want. We usually call somebody that they report to, appear, and then also someone that reports to them. And we ask, we would ask for two or three in, in each one of those buckets. And we would call and then present those references to you, if you would like.
Laura, was that?
That's it.
Okay. Yes, Joel?
Yeah. So, first of all, my thought process is, the process for hiring a school superintendent is not any different than hiring the process to hire a CEO. And the other thing is, school districts haven't traditionally gone down the headhunter approach. And as Dr. Steele and I've talked about, and a lot of other talk, have talked about it, is, we don't exactly have a good track record in school districts picking superintendents. So, that's why I, I'd like us to seriously consider the headhunter, because the other processes have failed miserably, in my opinion, in other school districts. So, I don't think it makes any difference that they haven't hired a school superintendent, because they've hired CEOs and top people all over the country, probably. That's my thought.
And Joel, do you have any other questions for Eden? I don't think he heard. I do have a, oh, did, do you have any more, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I don't.
Okay, okay. And then, I think, one final, with what we, with what you've presented as the process and the deliverables on this, you're, you're looking at estimating 20 to 30 hours of, of work for, on your part for the process?
Yes. And you'll, we will let you know. We'd like to share our work progress every week.
Okay.
And we would give you the number of hours spent every week.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Great. All right. If there's no other questions, thank you so much, Eden, for coming this evening, and we appreciate it. And we hope you have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me in, and I really appreciate the time, and being open to a new way of doing things.
Thank you.
It would be really fun to do it, too.
Thank you.
Thank you again.